Good evening and welcome to Athens City Council. It's Monday evening, November 6th, and it is 7:01 PM. And before we begin our formal meeting, I would like to give a land acknowledgement. We're on land occupied for millennia by the Adena, Hopewell, Ford, Agent, and Shawnee people. Our first item is establishing a quorum, and all members of council are here tonight. Next item of business is disposition of the minutes for the regular session held on October 16th, 2023. Do I have a motion for their approval of these minutes?
So moved.
Seconded.
We have a motion in second, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Minutes have been approved, accepted. We now have communications. Do council members have any communications they want to share? Councilmember Reiser?
Yes, this is not exactly a communication. This is something I just discovered. Tomorrow being election day, and I being the representative from the second board, our polling station is the Dairy Barn. Normally, you get there on Dairy Lane. Dairy Lane is under construction because we're putting in a countywide sewer system. It will probably be closed. Consequently, if you want to vote at the poll, you're going to have to find an alternate route. One is which you could take the Blackburn Road. Hopefully, you know how to get there from there, because I don't. And I'm not going to pretend that I do. The other alternate would be take 682 to, I'm sorry, what is it? 56th, and then to Elliotsville Road. Again, I don't know that one either. I've been here for 25 years, and I couldn't tell you how to get there from there. So for those who want to vote, there we are.
Can we cut through the ridges?
Yeah.
Back route, okay. So Google Maps will help.
Blackburn will make you right on Dairy Lane.
Correct. Councilmember Crowe.
I was at the compost facility today. So go up 682 through the ridges. Mr. Ritchie knows this route very well. And then down to Dairy Lane. It's only closed from Richland to the summit entrance. It's open there at Southside Parker, the Putt Putt, whatever we call.
Okay.
Thank you, the miniature golf, yeah.
Miniature golf.
Great. Well, that's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Any other communications?
Yes.
Councilmember O'Carroll.
Thank you, President Nisley. The National League of Cities has invited our mayor, myself, and our diversity, equity, inclusion, and accessibility coordinator to participate in their Racial Equity and Leadership Institute graduation, which will be the week of Tuesday, November 14th, in Atlanta. One of the resources that the National League of Cities has shared with us is a guide to how cities can acknowledge and address the history of harm to indigenous peoples and to rebuild trust and repair relationships. So I'd like to also commemorate that this is our first council meeting that's fallen during Native American History Month or Indigenous Peoples Month, and offer a little update that the Racial Equity Coalition of Athens County has been having some good conversations about how to help organizations demonstrate respect for that history. And I just want to read a little bit more from the information that Ohio University has compiled that builds on the land acknowledgement that President Nisley shared. It indicates that in 1795, after at least a decade of war with the United States, leaders from a dozen sovereign nations were forced to sign the Treaty of Greenville, which ceded lands comprising most of eastern, southern, and central Ohio to the US government. A Confederacy of tribes united under the great Shawnee leader Tecumseh continued to resist US aggression until 1815, when they were eventually forced from Ohio, including lands currently occupied by Athens and Ohio University. Many Shawnee, meanwhile, remained on reservation land in Ohio until 1831, when they were finally compelled to immigrate to Native American territories west of the Mississippi River. The final Ohio tribe to be removed was the Wyandotte in 1843. And this information can be found through the Ohio University Ping Institutes about this place, once home to 40 tribes and the traditional home of the Shawnee peoples. So thank you.
Thanks for sharing. Thanks for being part of that racial equity training and leadership team for the city. Reports from any other council members? Communications? We'll move on to reports and communications from other elected officials. Law Director Patterson. Auditor Hekt?
No reports. Mayor Patterson?
I have a few items for council this evening, President Nisley. First of all, council may remember that we applied for a grant through the Department of Transportation. It was the Safe Streets and Roads for All program. We were unsuccessful, but we were encouraged to apply for a comprehensive safety action plan. And so we did receive notice from ODOT in applying for that, and were successful in getting a $200,000 grant from the federal government, which will go to further planning of a way in which we can make safe passage from the vicinity of 682 and 56 all the way out to Morrison Gordon Elementary School, which would be wonderful. It may also include, again, further planning of the 682 corridor with the Roundabout project. So anyway, more to come on that, but it was great information to receive, especially to be encouraged to apply for it, and after not being successful. So it's a good sign for what could be in store for us in the future. The other thing I want to share with council, or another item I want to share with council, is just an update that we received, or notice that the, the ODOT is continuing to plan their three-year project, which will be the expansion of the 33-4 lane from Athens all the way to Ravenswood. And they are still looking to begin construction of this project in 2025, all the way through the fall of 2028. So that would be a great project, to have four lane all the way from Athens to Ravenswood, or vice versa. So we'll see potentially increased traffic in that corridor. The last thing I want to share is that, just as a reminder, you know, I share with city council the viral load sampling that we still get from our four sites throughout the city, as well as the five sites on campus. You know, COVID is still out there, everybody. We all recognize that, and just encouraging people to go and get your COVID vaccine. I got mine on Friday, and I encourage anyone who's viewing tonight to make sure that you go out and get it, as well as your flu shot. And that came to me via our now-retired Richard, Dr. Richard Gaskell, at the Athens City County Health Department, after many years, serving here in the city of Athens since 1970 as a private practice pediatrician, and as well as working with the school district, the Athens City School District athletics programs, and then becoming the Athens City County Health Department's medical director for 20-plus years. Read a proclamation for Dr. Gaskell, declaring last week, or a day last week, I think it was Friday, as Dr. Richard Gaskell Day here in the city of Athens, to congratulate him on his retirement.
Auditor, you're the service.
Lots of it.
All right, we'll move on now to ordinances for third reading. 9623 is an ordinance amending ordinance 1123, authorizing construction of the new fire headquarters, project number 346, introduced by Councilmember O'Carroll.
Thank you, President Nisley. I'd like to move that we adopt ordinance 9623.
Second.
Wonderful. As discussed previously, this is to finance the construction of our new fire station headquarters, now that we have secured bonds, whereas ordinance 4923 provided for the issuance of bonds for the purpose of financing the cost associated with the construction of a new fire station in the amount of $4 million, and whereas it is necessary to amend ordinance 11-23 to replace the general fund and ARPA fund authorizations for those provided through the bond proceeds, yet ordained by the council of the city of Athens, Ohio. Sections 2 and 3 of ordinances 11-23 are hereby amended to read as follows. Section 2, the 2023 Appropriation Ordinance 155-22, is hereby amended by appropriating from the unappropriate balance the following sums: $8,400,000 to Safety Services Fund, Fire 206.208, transaction class 500, and $4 million to Safety Services Fund, Fire 206.208, transaction class 500, and increasing the total appropriations by set amounts. Section 3, the Service Safety Director is hereby authorized to expend up to $13,670,000 as follows: $670,000 from General Fund, Fire 101.208, transaction class 500, that includes $70,000 authorized by ordinance 18-22 for planning slash preliminary engineering, and $600,000 authorized by ordinance 84-22 for design and construction management services. $13 million from Safety Services Fund, Fire 206.208, transaction class 500, that includes $600,000 for land purchase and site preparation authorized by ordinance 121-22 for said project number 346. Section 2, this ordinance shall be in effect in full force upon its passage and approval by the mayor.
Yeah, thank you. We have a motion in second. Do we have any comments or questions? Councilmember Swank?
Quick question for Director Stone. Now that ground has been broken, brick is starting to go up, would you say that we're still on schedule? Have been thrown any curveballs? We're still going to look at that 364-day construction calendar that they talked about early on?
As of today, we are still on schedule.
Great.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions from council members, elected officials, administration, or our audience members? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The motion carries, and the ordinance is approved. 9723, our next one, is an ordinance amending Athens City zoning code title 23, chapter 23.03A, or 23, general regulations and permitted modifications. Section 23.03.13L1A, sign regulations, and this is introduced by Councilmember Grace.
Thank you, President Nisley. I'd like to make a motion that we adopt ordinance 9723.
Second.
Thank you. And this ordinance adjusts the regulations in our code for temporary signs by adding the type of sign specifically known as a feather flag, and also specifying that the maximum number of temporary signs, and that of any temporary signs, shall not exceed two per property, and that for multiple businesses operating on one property, the maximum number of temporary signs shall be one per business. This ordinance also specifies a maximum total signage area for all temporary signs, and that shall not exceed 50 square feet.
Thank you. So we have a motion in second. Do we have any other questions or comments from council members? Other elected officials, our audience? Okay. We'll have the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The motion carries, and the ordinance is approved. 9823 is an ordinance authorizing the sale of property no longer needed for a municipal purpose, and is introduced by Councilmember Grace.
Thank you, President Nisley. I'd like to make a motion that we adopt ordinance 9823.
Second.
Thank you, Members F. And this ordinance does exactly what the title specifies. That is, council is stating and authorizing the sale of property that the city no longer needs. The specific property involved in this ordinance is a 21.75-acre parcel that has previously been used by the city of Athens for spreading sludge. This parcel is in Canenville Township. And section 2 of this ordinance states that the Service Safety Director is hereby authorized to advertise for sealed bids and accept the highest bid, which shall be not less than the appraised value, or reject any bids in accordance with ORC 721.03, and shall make a report to city council as to the disposition of said property.
We have a motion in second for approval of 9823. Do we have any comments or questions from council members? Other elected officials, or administration, or our audience? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The motion carries, and the ordinance is approved. The next ordinance is 123. This is an ordinance amending Athens City Code Title 1, General Provisions, Chapter 1.03, Code Fees Established, Section 5.04.08, Sewer Rates, introduced by all members of council. And we have looked at these rates before and had discussion for them. This is now at the third reading. And if council members are in agreement, I would entertain a motion for approval.
So moved. Second.
Are there comments or questions from council members? Councilmember Swank?
Couple meetings ago, we were provided a nice graph by Director Stone showing what the sewer fund balance would look like with four scenarios: 0% annual increase, 1%, 2%, 3%. And at that time, one of the things we wanted to see is if we didn't do anything for a year or two, what this graph would look like. Do we have that information tonight?
I don't have it. I can tell you it's about $2.5 million less at 2040.
At 2040, okay. If we don't do anything for a year or two. But we wouldn't go into, we wouldn't go below zero. That would only take us down about $3 million carryover, according to this graph.
Right, I think carryover is probably an inappropriate word that I shouldn't have used, because carryover has a specific meaning as it relates to the end of the fiscal year that the auditor's office, you know, zeroes in on and uses as a phrase. Really, we're talking about a running balance. And so to that purpose, I think our starting point was probably a little lower than what I had in there, and we went back and looked at the numbers, but the bottom line is you are correct. It would be less, but still above zero.
Less, but still above zero. So we could go a year and not have an increase, and still not be in a negative situation till at least 2040.
You could. I'm not recommending it, but you could.
But we could. But for the reason I say this is, as you mentioned, we have an election tomorrow. And even though not one of us sitting up here as an opponent, there are two very, very important issues on the ballot, both of them money issues. One deals with the EMS levy, an increase of 1.5 mils. The other is a bond request from the Athens City Schools to build a new high school. And depending on the value of your property, or for renters, the value of the property that you rent and your landlord pays taxes on, if both of these pass, there will be an increase in taxes that you're going to pay. Knowing that we're looking out at 2040, I'm just not comfortable voting on this in the affirmative at this point in time. In fact, there's a council person running for reelection tomorrow. If I had an opponent, voting yes on this is certainly something I would not want to try to justify, because I couldn't.
Do we have comments from other council members? Councilmember Crowe?
Thank you, President Nisley. I'm looking at the graph that, that Councilmember Swank is also looking at. This projection of these 0, 1, 2, and then 3%, the 3% line is to sort of keep us from getting into any problems with being able to manage our wastewater treatment plant and even the expansion of our, of our system further westward into the county. And as we all know, we, there's also unanticipated repairs and things that are needed. I'm comfortable with this 3% annual increase. I really appreciate that the city administration has been able to project this out, that 3% increase. That top line is not some spike that goes straight up in the air. It shows a gradual increase, but keeps us sort of level, keeps us solvent. I happen to have a conversation with our city treasurer, who was at a conference recently where this issue actually came up. Could I invite Mr. Thomas to address the council? Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you. Yeah, at one of our most recent meetings, Member Crowe asked me if I would like to speak to this. On October 26th, I was able to attend a conference that was meant for financial officers in the state of Ohio, something auditor, and I, we attend these kind of things. Coincidentally, in that, in that conference, Chris McCoy, who is the chief project manager for local government services in the state auditor's office, he wrapped up the conference by having a session that was called Lessons Learned, basically. Throughout the year, things that come up that they've learned from, and to give advice. And just coincidentally, his lessons learned was about municipalities and their sewer systems. So he brought up three different scenarios that, that this is pretty much what we're talking about. The most important one was this third one. The third one is basically what we are saying right now. He had a municipality that he had worked with that had a sewer fund balance of well over $1 million. Everything was going fine. They had a local council that decided, let's just leave things alone. Let's not raise rates, let's not do anything. Two years later, they had a negative balance of over $1 million. When the auditor's office went in to say, what happened? The answer was basically, we didn't raise rates. We had this happen, this happened, this, multiple things, and before you know it, they were in the negative. The lesson learned from that scenario was, if you have a healthy fund balance, you keep a healthy fund balance, especially in today's, where we're at with costs rising, inflation rising, the repair costs, labor costs, everything that goes into running these systems just continues to rise. So their advice, the state auditor's advice to everybody in the room, all the financial officers in the room, is if you have a healthy fund balance, you keep a healthy fund balance. You don't let it go down, you keep it going up. And again, the lesson learned was, if you do this, you're not going to be visited by the state auditor's office two, two years later, saying, what did you do? You know, how did you get to this point? What ended up happening with this third scenario, just to keep it, you know, to finish the story, was to get them back on track, the auditor's office came in and recommended a 10% increase for years one, two, and three, and then a 7% increase for the fourth year. So the lesson learned from that was, if you don't want to hit your, your residents with higher increases later, the steady increases is the way to go and keep your balance healthy. So again, it was just a little ironic, a little coincidental, that that was the exact scenario that they were talking about, and I just kind of thought it was interesting that that's exactly what we were talking about right here. So I told them I would be happy to present on that.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Mayor Patterson, and then Auditor Hekt?
Just to put an exclamation mark on what the treasurer just stated, if you look at that graph closely, again, it doesn't show an exponential increase in revenue coming in. It's showing council a healthy trajectory of what our revenue in the sewer fund is going to do. I do have an election tomorrow, and I think that this is the right thing to do, to be fiscally responsible for our sewer system, much like I would say the same thing for our water rates. You don't hold off on increases with the hopes that you're going to get people, you know, to vote on the school levy, or to do whatever. You know, we're talking about the city of Athens. We're talking about the city's sewer system. We're talking about the city's utility. And so it's, again, thank you, thank you, Treasurer Thomas, you know, for bringing that forward, because I think I attend similar conferences, and that's the kind of information that needs to be heard, that when you're looking and projecting ahead, any percentage misstep you have along the way, you find yourself running at a deficit sooner rather than later.
Auditor Hekt?
Thank you. As the auditor, I don't recommend this zero increase at all. We've had different percentages in the past. The sewer fund is a very expensive fund. We pay $1.6 million in loan costs every year. The budget is $500,000, or $5 million, I mean. It's a big operation, and when things go really wrong, it's very expensive, more expensive than our water operation. The new, the improvements on our wastewater treatment plant were $24 million compared to, I don't know if it was 14 or 16 million when we upgraded the water plant. We never know when something's going to happen, that we might need that. And finally, as a citizen of the city, I don't want to, I don't, wouldn't really appreciate a zero increase this year, and then having to double it or more next year. I think it's much better to just gradually increase. 3% is not a large amount. And as Service Safety Director Stone said, I look at the carryover and expenses a little bit differently, and I also know that the budgets get more expensive every year. Besides the cost of personnel, everything, everybody is buying is more expensive. And so it's, it's hard to project specifically, but I don't see our budget going down or staying the same. And finally, I don't think it's appropriate for city council to vote on increases or not to increase based on tax levies for other entities. We need to do what's right for the city, and everybody can make that choice to vote for the levies or not, but we shouldn't be trying to cut back on our budget inappropriately to make it easier for other levies to get passed around the city. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, everyone, for the comments. Okay, thanks, everyone, for the comments. If no further comments or questions, I think we'll call for the vote. All those in favor of ordinance 123, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Okay, we have 6-1. Thank you. The ordinance, the motion carries, and the ordinance is passed. 10123 is an ordinance amending Athens City Code Title VII, Traffic Code, Chapter 7.05, Parking Regulations, Section 7.05.22 and 7.05.26, introduced by Councilmember Reisner.
Thank you, Madam President. This ordinance is an amendment to, as you read. So let me just read the, what the amendment will do. It just says, "The city pay parking rate shall be established by separate ordinance." Everything else is struck from the original ordinance, so I'd like to make a motion to adopt 101-23.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and second. Any comments or questions from council members, administration, other elected officials, or our audience? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay. The motion carries, and the ordinance is approved. We'll now look at 10223. This is an ordinance amending Athens City Code Title I, General Provisions, Chapter 1.03, Code Fees Established, to include Sections 7.05.22 and 7.05.26 parking rates. And this is introduced by Councilmember Reisner.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to make a motion that we adopt 102-23.
I, I think this is the one we're amending, because there was a... Correct. And so we have a minor correction that in the high intensity zones, we're changing the 25 cents per 15 minutes. The math was wrong, and it's getting, it's to be amended to 10 minutes. Twelve.
Okay.
Twelve.
I'm sorry, I don't have a copy of the amendment.
Not one of these.
Well, it's not done.
Hold on. I'm sorry. There it is. It's 12, 12 minutes. So it's a correction in the math?
Oh, there it is. Hmm. Well, I've already made a motion. I guess I'll have to withdraw it. I'd like to withdraw my motion to adopt 102-23.
Okay. All right. Yes.
Yes.
We're fine, I think, because we did not have a second. We did not have a second. So we're okay. All right. So now you want to make a motion to amend, then, so we can correct the math from 10 minutes to 12?
Okay. We're making a motion to amend a proposed ordinance as opposed to amending an ordinance, correct?
We're just, we're just amending this one. Yes, amending this ordinance.
The, we're amending the amendment.
No, there is no amendment yet.
Well, it says here, "An ordinance amending Athens City Council," isn't that an amendment?
Well, it, it's referring to a previous ordinance, yes.
Yes, okay. Now, what we want to do is...
You're amending.
...amend the amendment, so.
Okay.
Well, I will make a motion that we amend the amendment of 102-23. From, let's see, sentence one, "High-intensity zone shall cost, strikeout $1 to $1.25 per hour, parentheses, 25 cents per 15 struck out, and the amended part is from 10 to 12 minutes."
Correct. So that's the only amendment that's changing that 10 minutes to 12 minutes.
Okay.
So we have a motion, and do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. And do we have any discussion of the amendment? Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay.
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 Okay, so we have one vote against. Okay. And so this is a 6-1, and the motion, the ordinance has been amended and read for the first time. Thank you. 10323 is an ordinance amending the 2023 Appropriation Ordinance 15522 and is introduced by Councilmember Crowell.
Thank you, President Nisley. I'd like to make a motion to approve 103-23.
Second.
Thank you, Members Ziff. This is a matter of paying our bills. We are a self-insured city, and we need to appropriate $250,000 to our medical insurance fund, 866, for a medical payment. Thank you, President Nisley.
Okay. Any comments or questions from council members, administration, other elected officials, or the audience? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay. The motion carries, and the ordinance is approved. 10423 is an ordinance finalizing costs for the Armory, Project Number 313, and authorizing expenditures from the city of Athens to the Athens Community Improvement Corporation Fund, introduced by Councilmember Crowell.
Thank you, President Nisley. I'd like to make a motion to approve 104-23.
Second.
Thank you, Member Reisner. Very excited about the Armory project. I believe maybe there was some demolition happening today at the site. It's wonderful and very exciting. I'll go ahead and read Sections 1 and Sections 2. As discussed at committee in the first and second reading, this would authorize the Service Safety Director to expend up to $1,214,500 for the Armory project. In Section 2, having finalized the project cost for the Armory, and in accordance with Ordinance 152-22, $914,086 is hereby authorized for expenditure from the city of Athens to the ACIC Fund 906, as per purchase order MV099058 for the Armory project. Thank you, President Nisley.
Okay. We have a motion and second for approval of 10423. Do we have any comments or questions from council, elected officials, administration, or our audience? Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay. The motion carries, and the ordinance is approved. 10523 is an ordinance authorizing funds to the Athens Community Improvement Corporation for payment of 2023 Armory electric bills, authorizing an inter-fund transfer and requesting reimbursement for payments made by the city of Athens, and is introduced by Councilmember Crowell.
Thank you, President Nisley. I'd like to make a motion to approve 105-23.
Second.
Thank you, Members Ziff. This pretty much is in the description, read by President Nisley. Section 1 simply reads, "The 2023 Appropriation Ordinance is hereby amended by appropriating from the unappropriated balance the sum of $4,500 to the General Fund, Other Administrative 101.120, for transfer, increasing the total appropriations by said amount." It also indicates this amount will be, the auditor will be authorized to make the inter-fund transfer from the General Fund to the ACIC. That's the Athens Community Improvement Corporation Fund 906 in that same amount. Thank you, President Nisley.
We have a motion and second for approval. Do we have any comments or questions from council members, administration, elected officials, or our audience? Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay. Motion carries, and the ordinance is approved. 10823 is an ordinance establishing a special revenue fund policy for the city of Athens and is introduced by Councilmember Crowell.
Thank you, President Nisley. I'd like to make a motion to approve 108-23.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Ziff. This, the title of this also basically says what this ordinance does. We had an excellent introduction to this special revenue fund from the auditor, discussed at committee in first and second reading. I'll just read Section 1. "In accordance with the Ohio Revised Code, Section 5705.13, Athens City Council hereby approves a special revenue fund policy for the city of Athens, more fully described as attached here too and incorporated herein by reference." Thank you, President Nisley.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion and second for approval of 10823. Do we have any comments or questions from council members, administration, other elected officials, or our audience? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay. The motion carries, and the ordinance is approved. We now have some ordinances for second reading, one of which I believe will be amended and another one will be suspended. Other than that, I will read the title and pause briefly to see if there are any comments or questions. So our first one is 9923. This is an ordinance amending Athens City Code Title I, General Provisions, Chapter 1.03, Code Fees Established, and introduced by all members of council. And I believe this is the one that's requiring the amendment, because what Councilmember Swank discovered is that we weren't charging a fee to turn things off after hours, but rather to turn things back on. So, good catch. And then the other items, I believe, that is also amending is the $25 specialty vendor's license fee that has been brought down from $100 down to $25 per month. The other change is to the rental permit fee, which was at $150, and has now, based, I think in part on Councilmember Spielness's comments, that the Service Safety Director is recommending $175 per unit for up to 10 units in one building. And then a $100 rental permit reinstatement fee that's been introduced. And then the last change is increasing the inspection fee for additional inspections from $50 to $65. So those are the amendments that are happening to this. And if those seem reasonable, then I would entertain a motion to amend this ordinance, 9923.
So move.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Seconded.
Okay. And is there any further discussion or comments from council members, administration, elected officials, or our audience? Okay. All those in favor of the amendments as described signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay. Okay, the ordinance has been amended and read for the first time. Thank you. We'll now move on to ordinance 10923. This is an ordinance accepting a permanent sanitary utility easement from Erie Land Company, LLC, for the Tyler Park Lift Station, and is introduced by Councilmember McCary. And if we don't have any comments or questions on this, we will move on to the next ordinance, and that is 11023. And I believe this is the one that we may be needing to suspend. This is an ordinance authorizing disposal of equipment and vehicles no longer needed for a municipal purpose, and is introduced by Councilmember Reisner.
And thank you, Madam President. I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules for 110-23.
And the reason being?
Reason being, the need to dispose the city bus. It's a serious, time-sensitive sale, so.
Okay, so the sooner the better. All right. So we have a motion and second for suspending, and ordinance 11023.
I'll second it.
Okay, you didn't second, thank you. Now we have a second.
I know, we used to be just saying it, but...
All right. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay. Thank you. The rules have been suspended. Councilmembers, all...
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion that we adopt 110-23.
Second.
You actually got a second in.
We did.
Let me just read the pertinent part here. "Section 1, Athens City Council hereby declares the following equipment and vehicles no longer needed for municipal purposes. Equipment, fire department smoke trailer, serial number, blah, so on, so forth." Next, "Vehicles, from the code office, 2011 Ford Ranger, and from our bus service, City Bus Number 1601. Section 2, the above-listed equipment and vehicles are hereby authorized for disposal by donation to other governmental agencies, auctions, sealed bids, trade-ins, sell for scrap, or by enterprise wholesale auctions or other enterprise outlets."
Okay, so we have a motion and a second this time to approve 11023. Are there any comments or questions from council members, administration, elected officials, or our audience? Okay. All those in favor, excuse me, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay. The motion carries, and the ordinance is approved. 11123 is an ordinance amending Athens City Code Title 17, Municipal Income Tax, Chapter 7.01 in general, introduced by Councilmember Crowell. And if no questions or comments, we'll move on to the next ordinance. 11223, this is an ordinance amending Athens City Code Title III, Administrative Provisions, Chapter 3.03, Executive, Other Officials, Section 3.03.07, Deputy Auditor. This is introduced by Councilmember Crowell. And if no comments or questions, we will move on to 11323. This is an ordinance amending the 2023 Appropriation Ordinance 15522, introduced by Councilmember Crowell. If no comments or questions, we'll move on to 11423. This is an ordinance amending Athens City Code Title 29, Housing Regulations, Chapter 29.03, Rental Dwelling, Short-Term Rental and Housing Permit, Section 29.03.08 Fees, and is introduced by Councilmember Crowell. If no comments or questions, we'll now move on to ordinances for first reading. And our first ordinance is 11523, and council members, I'll just, a brief bit of background before I read the ordinance. You might remember that we did have committee discussion on October 23rd, and we gave, the Service Safety Director and myself gave some brief explanations of the tax increment financing and also the community, community reinvestment area, and answered some of the questions of council member, but we have the expert with us tonight, Mr. Joe Ritchie, who is here to maybe offer some comments on both topics, both the, and so what we'll refer to in the beginning is the, the first one that we're addressing, and that is the community reinvestment area. So if we, once I read the title, we might have some brief information from Mr. Ritchie, answer any questions, and then we'll move on to the next one, which is tax increment financing. So 11523 is an ordinance implementing Sections 37, 35.65 through 7, 37, 35.70 of the Ohio Revised Code, establishing and describing the boundaries of a community reinvestment area in the city of Athens, Ohio, designating a housing officer to administer the program, and creating a community reinvestment housing council. And this is introduced by all city council members. And do you want to come join us, Mr. Ritchie? And he's been helpful in describing these ordinances in the past and is involved with the ridges, so welcome.
Thank you very much for having me back. I know that about a year ago, we laid out the three components that fit together, the creation of a new community authority, the establishment of a tax increment financing district that is coterminous or the same geography as the new community authority, and the creation of a community reinvestment area. So these ordinances are the second and third of the three, the first being the creation of the new community authority, which was approved by your council on June 15th this year, and was correctly formed and notifying the auditor of the state, and we've had our initial organizational meeting and adopted all our rules and regulations. Included among those things is pursuing these two ordinances. In your committee meeting, I had a chance, I was not present, but I had a chance to, to hear the, the video of it, and I think Mayor Patterson described very accurately with the tax increment financing, you have a review committee that meets annually and makes sure that it's tracking the way it should and does an annual report. This ordinance establishes a similar structure of governance or controls with the Community Reinvestment Act. So it is a tax-abated area that covers the, the area of the new community authority. It, it authorizes or makes possible tax abatement on property improvements, as was discussed in the committee meeting. None of this property is currently taxed. So we're talking about a strategy to increase the tax base over the long term by encouraging investment, including infrastructure investment at the site. So, so it's a stair step. The first portion of it, the 15-year tax abatement, covers all of the property, and then from year 16 through 30, the tax increment financing is just the non-school portion of taxes that are, that are abated or reduced. So the stair step is for year 1 through 15, the Community Reinvestment Act area allows the retirement of indebtedness associated with infrastructure. The tail of it is year 16 through 30. Put differently, in year 16, after improvements are made, the school portion of the taxes goes to the school system. So it's a way to generate increased tax base and increases for the school system. After year 30, all of the, all of the tax base is... After year 30, all of the tax base is in the hands of the city and the school system. So it is a way to build the tax base for the city. And that's what the two ordinances are.
Thank you.
Can I answer the questions?
Certainly. Councilmember Swank.
In years 1 through 15, is it 100% or 70%? It's been so long, 100%.
It's 100%.
And then the same 16 through 30, except for the school?
Yeah, so it turns out to be about approximately 66% of the taxes are collected and delivered to the schools.
Other questions or comments from councilmembers, administration, other elected officials, or our audience? Okay. So we'll consider 11523 read for the first time. We might ask you to come up again if there are any questions on 116, which is about the tax increment financing. So I'll read that one now. 11623, an ordinance declaring the improvements to certain real property located in the city of Athens, Athens County, Ohio, to be a public purpose. Declaring such improvements to be exempt from real property taxation pursuant to Ohio Revised Code, Section 5709.40B, requiring the owners thereof to make service payments in lieu of taxes, describing the public infrastructure improvements to be made that will directly benefit the real property, and establishing a public improvement tax increment equivalent fund for the deposit of service payments, together with related authorizations, introduced by all members of council. And do we have any questions on tax increment financing for this particular ordinance? I must have done a good job last week. Maybe.
Question.
Yes, Councilmember Spielness.
Yeah, I do have a question. In section 1, on the first one, the 11523, I feel as though the wording is a little odd, and I want to make sure that it says what we want it to say. So if we could just read that over carefully? Because to me, in my reading of it, and again, you know, perhaps I'm not reading it correctly, but if I got a little bit confused, perhaps someone else would too. It seems to suggest, I need to get back to where I was at, sorry, that in section 2... Oh, that's not the right one. I'm trying to find it here, sorry.
She's on page of the full document. Our document is page 51 of 111, if you're in the packet.
Let me get back to where, but it says something to the effect of, now I can't find the exact, something to the effect of discouraging new or historic renovation, or something like that. And I'm thinking, is that really what you want to say? Something about restoring historic buildings should be discouraged. And I don't know that that's really what was intended, but maybe I'm reading it wrong.
I'm not seeing that language.
I have the language. It was in the previous ordinance.
115, section...
The proposed community reinvestment area hereby designated as Ridge's Community Reinvestment Area, the community reinvestment area constitutes an area in which housing facilities or structures of historical significance are located, and in which new housing construction and repair of existing facilities or structures are discouraged.
I think...
So it'd be encouraged?
Encouraged.
Thank you.
That's how I read it.
Yeah, so I would think so, too.
Like on and off.
And can we declare that a typo, or you need an amendment?
I, well, I think that I need to talk with the attorney for the new community authority, because I did question that, and he assured me that it was fine, so...
So it's been reviewed by several people, but thanks. Thanks for raising the issue.
But I did, I do agree with you. The wording seems awkward. But I think in the past, it's been discouraged, but let me talk with him again.
Okay.
So I think it's important to make sure that that's clear.
And we will have that clarified, so that if we need to amend by the second reading, we can do that.
Okay, thank you.
And thanks.
We want to make sure we're doing what we intend to do here.
Okay. Any other questions about... That was on 115, but we're right now, having just read 116 about the tax increment financing. Are there any questions about that? I think we're ready to go. Thank you so much for being here tonight. Thanks for waiting. Okay. All right, we'll move on to ordinance 11723. This is an ordinance authorizing disposal of the city's leaf collector truck and a pertinence, no longer needed for municipal purposes, trade-in on the purchase of a new leaf collector truck for the street department, and declaring an emergency. And this is introduced by Councilmember Reisner.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to make a motion that we suspend the rules for 117-23.
Second. And the reason being?
The reason being is that we have a chance to make a good deal with a new leaver truck that's already built and ready to be delivered. But they, they being the city, needs to trade in our current old leaver truck as part of the deal. And that's what this ordinance covers, is disposing of it.
Thank you.
Is that correct, Mayor?
Tomorrow, so if you don't suspend, I can't sign for it if you don't suspend.
Timely, timely, timely meeting.
Dealer is trusting that you're going to do that tonight, because there's lots of leaves on the ground that we need to suck up.
So we do have the motion and second, correct, I think? All right. For suspending, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The rules are suspended, Councilmember Reisner.
Well, we already have a fait accompli here, so let's go through the motions. I'd like to make a motion that we adopt 117-23.
Second.
And the pertinent section, Section 1, Athens City Council hereby declares the following vehicle and a pertinence no longer needed for a municipal purpose, a 1977 leaf collector V8 diesel truck. Truck's here. Where was I? 1989 leaver rear engine, and so on, so forth. So before there's any more crazy eruption, let's pass it.
Okay. We have a motion and second for approval of 11723. All those, or any last comments or questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The motion carries, and the ordinance is approved. 11823 is an ordinance approving the final plat of the Homestead Court and Broadmoor University Estates Planned Unit Development, and is introduced by Councilmember Grace.
Thank you, President Nysley. This is a project, or one piece of a project that has been discussed in great length. And this is, the approval of this ordinance is part of moving forward with recommendations from the Planning Commission. As they held a meeting in September to establish a planned unit development, and then sent that recommendation on to city council. And on October 16, there was a public hearing on this project. And so the next step is for city council to approve, and Section 1 states, the final plat of the Homestead Court and Broadmoor University Estates Planned Unit Development, attached hereto and incorporated herein by reference, is approved. And so it is the approval of this planned unit development for the University Estates.
Thank you. Any comments or questions? Councilmember Spielness, and then Councilmember Swank.
Thank you. So have there been, I'm asking the administration now, have there been any further conversations with the developers? Is there better than even chance that they're going to move forward with it anytime soon, considering all the conversation we've had in the past about costs and going up and all that?
Thank you, Members Spielness. Yes, we met with the Sunday Creek Horizon's team, who's helping us in this endeavor and the developer, actually, two days ago. Or hang on, let me get this right, because two days ago would have been Saturday. So I think it was three days ago, Friday. And the initiative we're going to pursue is a new program through the Ohio Finance Housing, Ohio Finance Housing?
OFA.
OFA Finance Housing Agency, which basically, you know, funds housing projects. And this new program is called a Single Family Home Tax Credit Program. The rules around that just are being written right now, and our application would go in to do this in spring. But basically, this would be an additional incentive on top of the TIF that council has already put in place to offset the cost associated with the development. The developers are on board, assuming it can work for them. One of their biggest concerns is the servicing of construction debt, and the fact that a tax credit program basically comes at the end, as opposed to the beginning. And the situation that they're running into with the infrastructure costs, you know, being significantly more than was envisioned back five years ago when they started this project idea or concept, is that they pay interest only on that construction debt, construction loan debt, until everything's built. And so that, you know, do the math, that interest-only payment is $12,000 a month that they're paying during the time. So there's a cash flow issue specifically. And so what we're going to try to work through is a mechanism that maybe there's a different source of financing that, you know, wouldn't be interest-only debt, or maybe it would have a lower interest rate, that then that could be paid back by the Single Family Home Tax Credit. So it's going to get complicated, basically, is the answer. However, the developer is interested and wants to pursue it if we can figure out a way to make the numbers work. And like I said, the Sunday Creek team is helping us with it, with a direct liaison to OFA for this program. And our understanding is there is an Appalachian set aside in the program when it was written, just to be competitive for it. And we'd like to think that because we've gone through the Planning Commission process, and council will have approved the PUD, you know, we've got a developer in place, and everything's ready to go, that we would be more competitive than, say, another community that maybe wasn't quite as far along.
I'd just like to thank, I'd just like to thank the administration for really going to bat for making this happen. It's an important piece of housing that is needed in our city. It's in my neighborhood, but it wouldn't affect me, I don't think. But I do think that it's important that we move forward with this in some way. So thank you for that effort.
Councilmember Swank.
If we, we're not voting on this tonight, obviously, but when we get to third reading and vote, and we're voting on this, are we only voting on the layout of the proposed properties, as opposed to the structures that will be placed on them?
I believe that's correct, because there are already criterion within the TIF agreement that specify the types of structure. Now, I don't know if those specifications are incorporated into the PUD, or if that's separate, but my understanding was that there are not currently changes or anything that the structure of the buildings, the layout, what is required in terms of energy efficiency and accessibility requirements, that is all already agreed upon and set as a requirement for the TIF.
That didn't really answer the question. Are we, will we be voting on the plans that are on file in the administration's office, for the buildings? Or are we voting just on this diagram of what the lots are going to look like?
You know, we've looked at the designs for the buildings, or the structures themselves, the 42 units, and the platted properties, which have already gone through Planning Commission, Planning Commission approved. All of it is one big package. I don't know if you want that.
There are kind of some of both, to answer your question. And I'd like to say it's not complicated, but it is a little bit, in that Planning Commission approved a series of variances. And so like, for instance, the footprint of the building within the parcel is something that you would be voting on. So even though the parcels, you know, would be lined up here, the footprint of the building in the parcel, the variance is necessary to put the buildings where they're going to go, was part of that PUD approval by Planning Commission, and then subsequently will be part of your approval of the PUD. So, but to say, you know, the window will be here, you know, that zero entry threshold, Member Grace is correct in that that was a requirement of the TIF, not a part of the PUD approval.
Okay.
But there's still two major hurdles by ordinance that have to be passed over. One of them is approval by the Affordable Housing Commission, and the other is by the Disabilities Commission. And this has not been brought to either one of those yet.
This has, this project has been discussed at length in the Affordable Housing Commission.
Read the ordinance, and show me where either one of those have signed off. It hasn't happened. Because the Affordable Housing Commission hasn't met in over two years.
The Affordable Housing Commission recommended approval of this plan to city council.
Not the drawings, because the drawings were just recently completed. It's in the ordinance. So what I'm saying, Director Stone, is as soon as those two things have been checked off, those groups have met and made the recommendation, then we can vote on this.
Mayor Patterson?
We'll go back and review that. I mean, this has been something that's been, you know, in not only the concept, but also in the design since 2018. And so I will certainly go back and review to see if the Planning Commission, or not Planning Commission, if the Affordable Housing Commission back in 2019, or in 2020, I doubt 2020, but they did look at them, as well as the Commission on Disabilities. But we're talking a longer span of time than the past year or two.
That ordinance was passed in 2020, 19, 21, excuse me.
But the designs have been going through for quite some time.
Well, before we have our next meeting, we need to review that ordinance, just to make sure we're not doing something that the ordinance says we have to do.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, thank you. We had it read for the first time. 11923 is an ordinance amending Athens City Code Title 3, Administrative Provisions, Chapter 3.07, Administrative Departments, Boards and Commissions, Section 3.07.74, Establishment of Commission. And this is introduced by Councilmember Crowell.
Thank you, President Nysley. This ordinance has some slight changes to the designation of the Environment and Sustainability Commission. This ordinance adds that title in, under Section 1, 3.07.74 of our code, specifically indicates that this is Establishment of the Environment and Sustainability Commission. And then it also includes what was approved by the commission members themselves in creating their bylaws, which is that if a voting member who misses three unexcused consecutive meetings during the year, the commission may request the resignation of that member and petition city council to declare a vacancy. And that is the change that has been proposed to be incorporated into city code. Thank you, President Nysley.
Thank you. Any comments or questions? Councilmember Swank?
At the last meeting, a couple of my colleagues expressed some opinions on this. In one case, used the term very generous in terms of absences, and the other dealing with the responsibilities of council members. I have several questions. What is an excused absence? What would qualify as an excused absence?
And I'm going to offer, from my experience on different commissions and committees, that if you offer that you're unable to attend and notify the chair ahead of time, that's an excused absence. It's not that you have to have a slip from the doctor's office.
Mayor Patterson?
President Nysley, your spot on. Every board and commission that I sit on has similar language. And what I'm required to do is to notify said organization or board that I will not be able to make that meeting, and that constitutes an excused absence.
Second question, the way this reads, I could miss two meetings in a row, show up for one, miss two more, show up for one, miss two more, show up for one, and be within the letter of the law. The reason I say this is back, I don't know, Mayor, you correct me, you probably remember better than I do, when you pointed me to the Arts Parks and Recreation Board, I don't know, six, seven, eight years ago, it was pre-COVID, a long time ago, I had to make a big decision. Not whether or not I wanted to serve on the board, but could I serve on the board? For 30-some years, on Thursday nights, I played in Ohio University Golf League. For 30-some years, on Thursday nights, I played in Ohio University Golf League. Rec Advisory Board meets on Thursday nights. If I were going to serve on the Rec Advisory Board, I would have to miss May, June, July, and August, four meetings. To me, when you serve on a board, you make a commitment. So what I decided to do was, you know what? I'm going to move to Wednesday night, because I'm going to make a commitment. I guess what I'm trying to say is if somebody's going to be missing this many meetings, are they really committed to it? I would like to, two things. One, I'd like to have uniform attendance roles across all boards and commissions. And secondly, let's get rid of this unexcused consecutive. If you miss three meetings in a year, you've missed 25% of the meetings. How can you be an effective commissioner?
I'm just going to make a procedural comment. The law director, the mayor, and myself, and the mayor's executive assistant, Patty Whitmer, have been working for months to standardize the bylaws for all the commissions. But we gave each of the commissions latitude to decide some things, and this was a decision made by the Environmental and Sustainability Commission and voted, and they are making a suggestion to us. And I don't, I'm just going to offer an opinion procedurally that I don't think it's council's business to be changing a vote of a recommendation by the Environmental and Sustainability Commission. I could be very wrong. Director Eliason, what's your thought?
In the end, the council did pass previous ordinance establishing the commission and setting, and the Environmental and Sustainability Commission in setting certain requirements. So here is a recommendation, and council certainly has the opportunity to either vote yes or no on the recommendation from Environmental and Sustainability.
To start rewriting their laws. Yeah, right.
So does that mean that, say, the Rec Committee makes a recommendation, a vote 7-0, that we should do this? The council needs to do that? It's a recommendation.
It's just a recommendation. That's right.
It's just a recommendation. All this, recommendation, carries no weight, unelected, appointed board, which we truly appreciate, but it's just a recommendation.
It is a recommendation. It was taken by a vote. I think when we start to question, I mean, it's not something that seems out of line. It doesn't seem unreasonable. It's generous, yes, but just, I, that's just a personal comment in observing city council-appointed commissions, and even, I think, and the mayor can speak to mayor-appointed commissions, that we, we ask them to volunteer so much time. And I think this is a way of showing respect for the work that they do, that this particular commission has chosen to recommend, and I hear what you're saying, it's only a recommendation, to recommend that this is, these are the rules that they think are reasonable to operate by. If you want to vote it down, you can vote it down. But I think to start tinkering and going back to them to make suggestions on how they want to operate is not very respectful of all their work in some ways. Yes, Councilmember Spillness.
So in looking at all this, you said that you were trying to standardize some things across boards.
Some things we are.
So I'm wondering, I'm curious about what those things are, so we can get a perspective on that.
The things were, there was a template language that was actually picked up, the bylaws from the Commission on Disabilities. And so those were the recommendations that were followed. I think what we're trying to move towards is more standardized terms, though not when they begin, because we're still giving commissions latitude on when they could renew. There was at one point thought of even standardizing and having everybody renew on January 1, and then we decided that would be an administrative nightmare to try and line up all, you know, to fill all the vacancies for all the, you know, numerous commissions. So that didn't seem to be one to standardize. But to suggest to them that they consider, if they want to, rules of operating, so Robert's Rules of Order. If they want, if they feel it's helpful for them to have a chair and vice chair and a secretary, then they can do that. The other things that were standardized were that our meetings as city commissions are open to the public, and because of that, or not because of that, but as part of the responsibilities for that, that we have agendas, that we have minutes, that we publish and announce the meetings that will be held, so that any member of the public who wants to attend, and we've gotten a lot of people who volunteered and become active in commissions, just by coming in, sitting in on a meeting, and then saying, I'd like to be part of this. So that kind of, our responding to sunshine laws as prescribed by the state of Ohio is what we've been trying to standardize and get everybody to do that. And then also by standardizing this with minutes and agendas, we can share those documents on our website in a more standard way, so that we're letting the public know what we're about. Yes.
Well, and that's, and that's great. I think that sounds really wonderful. I guess I'm a little puzzled in that if it's disrespectful to not accept their recommendation or question their recommendations on this kind of thing, then perhaps this shouldn't come before council at all. In other words, have a system where if they want to do these kinds of decisions internally, then we shouldn't be part of that, which I think is okay.
Right.
But if they're going to, if this is going to be something that is, goes through council, then it seems reasonable that we might not agree with them. So it puts us in an awkward position.
But not get involved with it. I think at this point, what we have, though, are, there also needs to be a mechanism that if somebody doesn't attend, that there needs to be some kind of procedure for saying, if you don't attend and fulfill your responsibilities, then there's a consequence to that. And so for that reason, I think there may be minor variations to it, but I think that that's helpful. Councilmember Crowell, did you have a comment?
Yes, thank you. I'll just say that I agree with members Swank and members Spillness in sort of different ways, which is that when the law director reviewed the bylaws of the Environment and Sustainability Commission, the revised bylaws, these were the pieces that were in conflict with what existed in city code. So there's lots of things in the bylaws that aren't in city code, because they were created by what the commission wanted. So it's a little bit of a mixed bag, but we had to make sure we weren't approving bylaws that were in conflict with city code. So what we're seeing before us today is the differences between what the bylaws that are being recommended, and I'll go back to member Swank, is that these are being recommended to council. I'll be quite frank, I don't believe the commission is going to feel if you vote against this, these changes, that they are being disrespected, or that anybody's going to protest and stop doing their work. They're all very dedicated individuals, and this, as I mentioned, this has never come up, because we have very dedicated individuals. So three unexcused absences is not something that we have had to experience, luckily. So I would just say that it is normal council business. If you disagree with this, member Swank, then you should propose an amendment to the language, see if other council members agree with you, and then finally, we'll get to a vote. If the final recommend, the final thing we have in front of us is not to your satisfaction, then you vote against it. It's simple, it's the way council does business. So I think we can move forward, if there's not amendment to change what I've read today.
One final comment, and then we're going to close, I think, for discussion right now, because we have, we have other readings. This is first reading.
Yes, I appreciate that. Yeah, it's been my experience, having been on many boards over my career, that this kind of thing would be a part of the bylaws and not really put here, so that they can change those things internally if they really feel that that's appropriate. But since we're kind of stuck with this, it appears now, I feel that it's overly generous. But, you know, I, I, as member Swank said, and I've thought this too, you know, you can go to two meetings, then not go, and then go two meetings. I mean, you could really be pretty lax. And so there's a very minimal mechanism for getting rid of somebody who really is not doing the job. And, you know, you've been lucky so far, but things happen, and people can be, or people can, you know, start to slack off.
Councilmember Swank.
So procedurally, and I appreciate your comments, that was well stated, procedurally, is there a way to kick this back to the, to this commission and let them run this the way that they feel is most appropriate, without us having to take action on it?
Law Director Eliason.
The Athens City Code already states that a voting member who misses three unexcused consecutive meetings during the year, then the commission may request the resignation. So when council enacted this ordinance, council put that in. And the, the change is really only in council declaring the vacancy, rather than put it on the commission. So procedurally, if council wants to change that, then certainly they can. They could amend the city code.
Because the way it reads now, we're going from a shall to a may. The way it reads now, you, three unexcused absences in a row, you're gone. The way it's now worded is, you may, which kind of weakens it.
So we have, we have a re, so we have the first reading. What I'm hearing is a suggestion that, Councilmember Crowell, that maybe you convey to the commission members to see if they want to discuss this again, and to see if they want to make any changes to it. And then we'll address it at the second reading, two weeks from now. I hear, see a question in your face, Mayor Patterson, you okay with that? Yeah, your comment.
You know, the clock is ticking in order to get ordinances completed by the end of the year, otherwise it dies with the new council coming in. So I'm just curious, Councilmember Crowell, when are they meeting next?
We just met last week, so it would not be a full meeting until...
December. You would meet before the third reading.
And it could be amended, read for the first time, suspended.
I have to say that I haven't memorized our bylaws, but I believe the recommendation to standardize our bylaws may have included something about not meeting in December. So I can't say, I mean, I could look at my calendar real quick, but I can't remember.
I would suggest that you can have some discussion amongst commission members, and I would think that the chair, if there's a recommendation by consensus, that the chair could submit something in writing if they're wishing an amendment, if wanting an amendment. If they don't, then we can deal with this, and we can either vote it up or vote it down.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Thanks, everybody, for the discussion. Ordinance 12023 is an ordinance authorizing the auditor to reduce 2023 year-end appropriations and is introduced by Councilmember Crowell.
This is an annual ordinance that we authorize the auditor to be able to do her job. Section 1 reads, "The auditor is hereby authorized to reduce the 2023 appropriations where anticipated receipts are not adequate and, when combined with the carryforward balance, not sufficient to approve the full appropriation of funds." I have nothing else to say unless the auditor wants to approach, and if not, that's fine too.
I think this was mentioned by you when we discussed it. This was an action recommended or requested by the state auditors several years ago, so that it doesn't appear that we can spend money that we don't have. Not that we've ever done that, but it's just a process to go in and reduce them if the revenue doesn't come in to cover those amounts, even though we haven't spent all of that amount, but it's required by our state auditors.
Thank you. Thank you, President Isley.
Thank you. No comments or questions. We will move on to 12123. This is an ordinance amending the 2023 Appropriation Ordinance 15522 and authorizing an inter-fund transfer, introduced by Councilmember Crowell.
Thank you, President Isley. There are four items on this appropriation ordinance, $40,000 to the general fund, police department to cover year-end payroll expenses, $30,000 to the general fund fire department to cover the year-end payroll expenses, $51,000 to the community center fund 271 to cover year-end payroll expenses, and $80,000 to the sewer fund to cover the increased electricity generation rates at the wastewater treatment plant. And then finally, there is an inter-fund transfer from the street fund 220 to the capital improvements fund 580 in the amount of $100,000. Thank you, President Isley.
No comments or questions. We will move on to ordinance 12223, an ordinance amending the 2023 staffing levels authorized by ordinance 14722 and declaring an emergency. And this is introduced by the Finance and Personnel Committee. And if I understand correctly, we may need to suspend on this. Is that requested?
Because there's a couple positions that titles are changing, and we want to hire against those new titles. We've recently been notified of a pending personnel loss that is a pretty pivotal position that's going to damage our ability to do a lot of things. And so getting those couple positions backfilled that are the new title that, you know, is established by ordinance, it would really be helpful.
Thank you, President Isley. I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules for 122-23 based on the Service Safety Director's comments.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor of suspending the rules indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The rules have been suspended, Councilmember Crowell.
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion to approve 122-23.
Second.
Thank you, members. If, as discussed at committee, you can go through the changes to the titles and the shifting of the FTE weights for these, these title changes. Many of these are, are within the Engineering and Public Works Department, also within the Community Center Recreation Department, and have to do with the way our recreation department manages our summer pool operations and seasonal staff, and the way that the Engineering and Public Works Department is operating all their functions, as well as code enforcement. And Director Lucas has added the pay grades document to the end here, letting everyone know exactly where those positions fit on the pay grade chart. Thank you.
Okay. Have any comments or questions from council members, administration, other elected officials, or audience members? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries, and the ordinance is approved. 12323 is an ordinance authorizing the Service Safety Director to execute an easement and right-of-way agreement with the Ohio Power Company, AEP, for installation of electrical service to the new fire station on Stimson Avenue, introduced by Councilmember McCary.
Thank you, President Isley. This was discussed previously in committee, and I will read Section 1. Athens City Council does hereby authorize the Service Safety Director to execute an easement and right-of-way agreement with the Ohio Power Company and Ohio Corporation and a unit of American Electric Power for installation of electrical service to the new fire station on Stimson Avenue. A copy of said easement and accompanying plat are attached here too and incorporated herein by reference. I believe the only small friendly amendment or clerical adjustment would be the addition of a comma after Ohio Power Company before an Ohio Corporation.
That's in the ordinance itself, right, in the language? Okay, she found it. Okay, great, thank you. Any comments or questions? Yes, Councilmember Swank?
Director Stone, are these utilities going to be able to place underground?
This, this specific one comes overhead to the point that it goes to the transformer, and then the transformer will drop, and then it goes into the, into the building.
Okay.
Underground. So on the station site itself, it'll be underground coming into the station, it won't be an overhead service that connects to the building, but, but there will be overhead, because it's, you know, it's a primary line, this is a pretty significant line, it's coming off of the corner of May and Morris, and then across the church property there, and across the newly acquired property to hit a point, and then there'll be a drop to, you know, underground to come into the building. There will be a portion, I guess, that's above ground, but it... There will be a portion, I guess, that's, that's above ground, but it currently is above ground, and, and, uh, this is big, big power, this is three-phase, um, you know, primary feeds because of the, um, NevY-ready charging stations that are getting installed at the station. So in addition to the fire, the, the demand for the station itself, it also will, will be the fast, uh, the fast chargers that will go into the parking lot for the public use.
All right, any other questions or comments? If not, one twenty-four twenty-three is an ordinance authorizing the Service Safety Director to execute an easement and right-of-way agreement with Columbia Gas of Ohio for service to the new Stimson, new fire station on Stimson Avenue, and is introduced by Councilmember McCary. And council members, we're provided a hard copy today of the Exhibit A for the Columbia Gas, so we do have that. And, um, right, this one's introduced by Councilmember McCary.
Yes, thank you, President Isley. This is the second of the two easements that we'll discuss for the fire station tonight. Section one, um, reads that Athens City Council does hereby authorize the Service Safety Director to execute an easement and right-of-way agreement with Columbia Gas of Ohio Incorporated for service to the new fire station on Stimson Avenue. A copy of said easement is attached here, too, and incorporated herein by reference. We'd like to have both electricity and gas at the new fire station.
Okay. Any comments or questions? If none, we'll now move on to announcements and other business. We will be having committee meetings next Monday night, and so if chairs have any items that they want, um, to bring forward, then they should notify clerk of council by Wednesday. And are there any other announcements? Yes, Councilmember Swank?
Uh, for anybody who's been up near Sales Park this summer and noticed the giant baggie, that was not a burial ground, what that was, was muck that was drained from Sales Pond Park. Started out about this high, and now it's down to about this high. It's dried out, and people are wanting to know when they can get to that muck to put in their gardens and things like that. Later this week, the Arts Parks and Recreation Director will be announcing a procedure for securing that. So even though a few people have already gone up there and filled up wheelbarrows and things like that, wait a few days to the announcement, and then follow those procedures. And it's very, very, very good, uh, what would you call it? Yeah, soil amendment for gardens and things of that nature. But leave it be till the announcement is made later this, this week, if you would, please. And there's plenty of it for everybody.
Thank you. And I do, uh, did receive a, a notice from our clerk of council that we probably will be needing a special session next Monday night, so I would like to announce that now. All right, and we now have an opportunity for citizens to speak on legislative items and city services not covered on the agenda. Is there anyone wishing to make a statement? You'd have up to three minutes. Okay, all right. We're now going to make a motion. Oh, yes, Mayor Patterson, I'm sorry, if you had any announcements, you do. No, no, it's okay.
Executive session.
Sorry.
Um, one of the things the administration would like to do, if it's okay with council, is to amend that executive session to add to it collective bargaining. This is something we were hoping to have on for tonight, but it, uh, we, it didn't get on for this evening.
Are we okay with that? We can do, it's, it's in a moment of time before announcing it. Law Director Eliason?
Um, I don't know that we've ever amended the agenda ad. Clerk says we have, so.
Okay.
Oh, I guess then I'll have to have a motion to amend. Well, just as long as it's in the motion, it's made. Right. Yes.
So, and this would be for an adding collective bargaining? Okay. So just a moment of background and explanation, it's now eight-thirty. I know there are students who have been very patiently waiting and taking notes. So what we'll do is we're going to have that motion to go into executive session, and then we will take a break for, do fifteen minutes, if needed, up to fifteen minutes. And I'm gonna start from eight-thirty now, or it's eight-thirty-one, so it's eight-forty-five. And you can speak with any of the council members or administration that you're wanting to. After that executive session, we will open the doors again, and we will then have an adjournment of the meeting. If for some reason there was an additional question you wanted to ask, you can always stay till after we adjourn and come back again. So I could have a motion, and what we're going to include in that motion is not only the threatened litigation, but collective bargaining. So if somebody would make a motion to go into executive session, yes, Councilmember Grace?
Thank you, President Isley. I would like to make a motion that council go into executive session at, beginning at eight-forty-five PM this evening with all members of council, president of council, law director, mayor, and our Service Safety Director and Deputy Service Safety Director for purposes of discussing pending litigation. And the auditor will also be present. Purposes of discussing pending lit, litigation.
Threatened.
Threatened, pending litigation.
Threatened.
As well as collective bargaining.
Okay. So we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, second, I'll do a roll hall vote. Councilmember Spillness?
Yea.
Reisner?
Aye.
Crowell?
Aye.
Swank?
Aye.
Grace?
Aye.
Ziff?
Aye.
McCary?
Aye.
Okay. We have until eight-forty-five, so if you have questions, feel free to come on.